Thanks guys for coming in and doing this.
Wow.
Thank you.
Rich.
Rich?
Thanks for going in.
Thanks for coming in.
I like seeing that shirt directly.
One time up then?
Thank you.
Thank you, you really changed the energy in this room.
Wow, it's gonna be a tough act to follow, thank you.
Yes, okay.
Okay, that is a really great way to start out a meeting. I'd like to call the Cook County Board of Commissioners regular, not, doesn't feel very regular anymore, a meeting to order, and our first order is to do the pledge of allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There, that's how you get a meeting on.
Wow, seriously, that's some amazing energy you just put into this room and this process. That flag should feel very...
They represent the Grand Board of Demand all over the state of Minnesota, Canada, Wisconsin.
Wow, amazing, thank you very much. Adjustments to our agenda?
Madam Chair, I have the one adjustment of the addition of the approved interim engineering contract.
Great. Should we do it just before?
I'm sorry, we don't have to add it, it's already on B.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. We have something on the agenda that needs to be there, great. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, public comment, are there any folks here for public comment? Don't think so, alright. Consent agenda, is there anything you need, anyone who needs to poll? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Scott Harrison, Mary Sumnis, are going to give us an update on the status of the Lutzen Housing Project.
I'm gonna hand out a memo from Cliff Nettle.
Thank you.
From One Roof, and then the figures that Scott is gonna speak to.
Molly, need a...
I've got a copy.
Okay, great. Great, thank you.
I have one.
You're okay?
I have one electronically.
Alright, well, thank you Scott and Mary for being here.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, just want to give you an update on where we are on the Lutzen project on rental housing. About a week ago, on a conference call that included Jeff and Brady, and your counsel Bob Tofti, and Ehlers, and Cliff, and myself, we decided to postpone the tax abatement bond. I'll tell you why as I walk through the numbers on what the missing pieces are. So this is not an unusual development, when you're talking about something on this scale with as broad a variety of sources that we have, but I'll walk you through the loose ends. Most of these numbers are in bid form, and we are pleased with that, but there's a couple issues with the sources I'd like to walk through, so. If everybody has a copy of this, from top to bottom, one of the loose ends is the fourplex bid, you see that on the top line, at a million seven and change for the four units. Our developer has decided to be more aggressive in looking at an alternative bid from a different vendor, so I'll just leave it that way, so that won't go up, and hopefully that will come down, which would be helpful. If you look down near the bottom of the soft costs, you'll see that there's an operating reserve of forty-five grand, and a replacement reserve of thirty-five grand, eighty thousand dollars in total. If you look further down at the Greater Minnesota Housing Finance, eighty thousand dollars on the source side, for reasons that I'm not totally familiar with, that has been tabled as a decision by GMHF, they're going to look at it again, but I want people on the board to know that if that does not come in, the impact is not on the development construction side, it is building reserves, which is a working capital issue for the developer, does not affect the front end and the construction. If it goes away, this is still gonna go. Second, the look, the three fifty for IRRB you're familiar with, that is in place, and has been awarded some time ago. The Deed Workforce Housing Grant, three twenty-five, was awarded some time ago. Because Deed was aware of this housing project, and because Deed also was financing something elsewhere in the state at Glencoe, Minnesota, the bids at Glencoe, can you believe it, came in, underestimate. I'm not familiar with that concept, but that's what I'm told. So they reached out to One Roof and said, can you use additional funds? And Cliff was quick to say, yes indeed. So there is a likelihood that there'll be some additional funds coming from Deed because of Glencoe. The problem right now in getting a decision from Deed is Glencoe was told by MINDOT that they have to put a turn lane into their development, so they have to rebid their stuff, and time is advancing. So when that issue is complete, it's supposed to be complete by the end of August, we will know how much is left on the Deed side for the supplemental Deed grant, a hundred grand. The other thing that I want people to be aware of is IRRB round two. We have met with Steve Peterson, we are hopeful and expecting supplemental funding from them. That board, as you probably know, meets only four times a year. There was a particular project they want to be supportive of, they were going to meet in July, they've moved that board meeting off until earliest in August, possibly September, because they want to support that other project, and those bids are not ready for the decision by Deed, excuse me, by IRRB. So, in summary, we've got four loose ends, I want people to be aware of them. The Greater Minnesota Housing Grant does not affect the construction side, so we have two plans going forward. Plan A is to find out if our funders, when we get final definition from Deed on the second piece, and IRRB on their second piece, whether or not we'll start work on the road, water, and septic portion of it, to facilitate movement next spring, when, and hopefully we'll issue those bonds, and we could move up the timing of the setting of those units, if the infrastructure's in place to do so. So, A, we're not gonna float the bonds now, B, we expect to do that, hopefully early spring or late summer, and we've got four loose ends, I just want people to be aware of them, and have the chance to ask questions.
Great, thank you, very excellent summary. So we'll do our usual roundtable with questions, comments. Commissioner Storley, do you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the two items here, it looks like wetland mitigation could take place this fall then?
That is, that is underconsidered right now, and my understanding is, and of course that's Cliff's domain, not the EDA domain, is they were trying to figure out exactly how much of an acre they needed to purchase, and to go into the market and purchase them, so that will be wrapped up this fall, that number.
And the archaeological review, you were just notified of that, or they were?
Chipotle.
EDA? The archaeological?
Was just notified that they need to do an archaeological review.
On the west end, in addition to the east end.
They've completed it on the Grand Marais project, and initially, they didn't expect it at the Lutzen property, but, and I don't know what changed, but it did, so.
Commissioners, Madam Chair, I just want to be aware, everyone to be aware that there's one other loose end. I've been in touch with MINDOT twice over the last couple months, and they still need to make a judgment on whether or not they're gonna require a turn lane here, which would be, I don't know, fifty thousand bucks or something. So until we know that, we have that loose end as well, so we've got time now to repair these issues, and hopefully tie this up and come back to you for the final blessing on the issue of the bonds.
Great. Could you refresh my memory in terms of sending out letters to folks in that area who would be affected by this? Has that been done, and you've received?
Well, it was, it was done as a part of the subdivision ordinance. Jeff, can you speak any more thoroughly to that than I?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think that the subdivision and the conditional use permitting process have their, have their notification and public, public input process, so I'm assuming that that's all gonna be handled there, related to, to anything else, we've, related to the issuance of funds, we've done that here, and anything related to assembling the, the list of properties that we're gonna use to balance the abatement with, that's already been done too, so.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's completed, that was published, and they don't get an individual notice, that's a...
Commissioner Storley, we went to the county planning and zoning last week with the request for the conditional use permit, which was approved by that board, and the staff of the land department did report that they had received a few letters, and they were mixed, some in favor and a couple with questions or concerns, and my understanding of what occurred at that hearing was that all the questions were answered satisfactorily. Cliff Cannell from One Roof was here, and he spoke to their questions, and that CUP was approved by that body, and now I assume it comes to the board for final approval.
Okay, good information, I wasn't real sure where that was all at, and thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner DuKer?
No questions, just more proof of our diligence, and that we're not gonna just do a project when we don't have everything lined up, so I would just like to thank Scott and Mary for the work, and know, Scott, you spend night and day trying to pull money out of your hat, so, thank you.
When it's ready, we'll be back.
Yes, great, thank you. Commissioner Bershon?
Thanks for all you've done, and will continue to do, I guess, but this is coming together, and it's understandable, there'll be some loose ends, so, but thanks for your diligence and expertise in helping us with this project, that's very important.
Thank you.
Done, Myron?
Yes.
Commissioner DuKer? Oh, and you're passing the pen. This is a new ceremony.
I'm glad to hear that they're shopping around for some more prices on buildings and whatnot. And then, I know with the archaeological thing, that's a very important thing, you know, you look what just happened down on the Highway twenty-three project, where MINDOT dug through an Indian burial ground, you know, and they're up and down the whole shore, so I think it's very important that they do that.
Yes, we're happy to proceed with that, and be careful.
Great, thank you, and I think there's no action to be taken, except we really appreciate you bringing this information forward, and also your ability to summarize it is really helpful, and Valerie's there to get it all down. I have a hard time grasping those things in the first instance that I hear them, but I know Valerie's grasping it, and...
Madam Chair, I'm just handing out to the, this is an addendum to the official statement that came out from Ehlers, and it just, it just states that the sale is postponed, so just, that's the official notification.
Okay, great. Great, so we also have official notifications that the abatement...
We have been blessed with flat or strong demand for the bonds, general, in general in the market, so the rate...
That's good to know.
Has not gone up, it's actually come down a little bit, so we are at risk on that, both ways, it'll change, but so far it's been positive.
Great, and we'll just hope that it stays positive for our exactly right time, which is, which will be coming, this project is not going away, this project will be coming, so, thank you very much for...
Thanks, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Coming here today.
Thank you.
Great, alright. There was so much energy in this room earlier, it just feels, yeah, I still feel it reverberating. Yes, thank you. So Valerie, on that note, with that reverberation...
Yeah.
You can present your emergency management and public information hazard mitigation planning grant.
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, wanted to come today because we are at the point of updating our all hazard mitigation plan, it's also referred to as a multi-hazard mitigation plan. Counties are required to have one, that is, both state and FEMA approved, because it allows us to apply for disaster relief funding, should a disaster happen that's IDed in your hazard, the, the analysis of hazards and identified mitigation work. So the last time the county's plan was approved by FEMA and Homeland Security Emergency Management was 2010. We did begin to update the plan, beginning in 2015, under a separate grant application, and since then, some of the requirements have changed, as far as requiring a separate tribal annex for the Grand Portage Band, so we're running a parallel process to do a proper tribal annex in conjunction with the Cook County's plan, so Mike Kipour, the emergency manager for the Grand Portage Tribe, and myself, along with Homeland Security and Emergency Management, are applying for a new grant program to update the all hazard mitigation plan. So the scope of this work, should the resolution be approved today, we, we are eligible for a grant from HSEM, there is a twenty-five percent match requirement from the county, the feds pay seventy-five percent of it, the total scope of work and estimate comes in at twenty-eight thousand. This money was previously approved in 2015, we did have to return it, and now we're starting over again to undergo the new process. So coming today to get your support to move ahead with this, so that we have an updated plan, aimed to begin in the fall, and this would go through 2018. The state's preference is to contract a consulting team through UMD and their Geospatial Analysis Center. They are completing seventeen different county plans across the state, they have a well-oiled process that identifies all the different hazards, the risks, all of the GIS data, and works with counties to complete their plans. So I'm hoping for your blessing to move forward and create a new one.
Great, thank you Valerie. We'll start with questions and comments with Commissioner DuKer.
It's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Commissioner Bershon?
Thanks for all your work on it, that's timely.
So do we have the funding still from 2015 for matching, or do we need to allocate funding from somewhere?
We do need to sign a, a new match allocation letter, it hasn't...
But do we have the seven thousand somewhere?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there's no need to, to identify it in other areas, it's been sitting there until we were able to move ahead with the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm impressed that we have fifteen natural hazards identified. I can't think of one thing in here that wouldn't be identified, other than a solar storm, that would be interesting, infectious disease, I think these are very, you know, complete, it's just interesting how they identify the different hazards, and I guess probably for us, living in the woods, the biggest fear is forest fires.
Yes, wildfire, as well as blowdown and straight-line winds becoming more of a weather pattern, are our biggest hazards, and the, and the new update to the plan will rank each hazard and prioritize the mitigation activity.
So the seven thousand that you already have, we still need twenty-eight on top of that?
The state will provide that grant.
Okay, okay.
Great, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Support.
Thank you. Discussion, is there anyone opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, an update will be brought back when we have drafts of the plan, Commissioners, as well as the public will be included in the process.
Great, we saw that in the plan, it's a great thorough plan.
We just signed up for more homework.
Yes, we signed up for more, that's our job, homework, yes, it's great, thank you. Okay, so now Administrator Cadwell, you have an update and a contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair, if we could consider item B first, the, at our last meeting, you granted, granted me the responsibility and authority to negotiate a contract for continuing education, or engineering services during the vacancy in our county engineer position. And Wednesday morning last week, I had a meeting with Kristen Foster and Matt Huddleston from Lake County, and with John McDonald from MINDOT, and we outlined the scope of, of their availability, of Kristen's availability, to provide that oversight. John McDonald was concerned about the oversight of the, of the County State Aid Project and County State Aid Highway Seven, and, and making sure that we had statutorily required oversight of that project. And so what you see before you is a, is a, is the proposed contract from Lake County to provide continuation of services, and it's limited in scope in a couple of ways, it's limited specifically to the things that we need an engineer to sign off on, and to provide oversight to, and, and it, and it's limited in the timeframe, as you'll see that it's, it says that the contract is good through October twenty-fifth, or until we find a replacement county engineer, whichever comes first, and that's simply because Kristen had some time off scheduled, and she said, I will do this, but it's not gonna go into the time off that I have scheduled, and we want to be very respectful, they have a lot of work going on down at Lake County this year, and Kristen has already been up, she came up that afternoon to meet with staff and to review the projects in, in hand, she was onsite yesterday, her plan is to be here approximately one and a half days a week, and I think that's gonna be Thursday afternoon and Friday, that she's planning to be here to lend support to our staff, and so she'll primarily be working with the engineering techs, who are the onsite, respond, have the onsite responsibility for the County Seven Project, the Maple Hill-Pit Road is a part of that contract, so all of that is managed by Ulan Contracting, and we've had conversations with them as well. So everybody is up to date on what's going on with this, the terms of the, of the agreement, you can see there is, is they're suggesting a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour for this, for the professional services, and I had just the opportunity to get this to Attorney Hickin to review late afternoon, so I don't know if she had an opportunity to review or make comment.
I'm looking at her right now, I have some questions, I need to add some language, but I don't think I would change the substance of the agreement if the Commissioners wanted to move forward and approve subject to... tribal annex for the Grand Portage Band. So, we're running a parallel process to do a proper tribal annex in conjunction with the Cook County's plan. So, Mike Keport, the emergency manager for the Grand Portage Tribe, and myself, along with Homeland Security and Emergency Management, are applying for a new grant program to update the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. So, the scope of this work, should the resolution be approved today, we, we are eligible for a grant from HSEM. There is a 25% match requirement from the county. The feds pay 75% of it. The total scope of work and estimate comes in at 28,000. This money was previously approved in 2015. We did have to return it, and now we're starting over again to undergo the new process. So, coming today to get your support, to move ahead with this, so that we have an updated plan, aimed to begin in the fall, and this would go through 2018. The state's preference is to contract a consulting team through UMD and their Geospatial Analysis Center. They are completing 17 different county plans across the state. They have a well-oiled process that identifies all the different hazards, the risks, all of the GIS data, and works with counties to complete their plans. So, I'm hoping for your blessing to move forward and create a new one.
Great, thank you, Valerie. We'll start with questions and comments with Commissioner Dushaw.
Oh, it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Commissioner Bershine?
Thanks for all your work on it.
Yep.
That's timely.
So, do we have the funding still from 2015 for matching, or do we need to allocate funding from somewhere?
We do need to sign a, a new match allocation letter. It hasn't.
But do we have the 7,000 somewhere?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there's no need to.
Finding.
To identify it in other areas. It's been sitting there until we were able to move ahead with the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm impressed that we have 15 natural hazards identified. I can't think of one thing in here that wouldn't be identified, other than a solar storm, that would be interesting. Infectious disease, I think these are very, you know, complete. It's just interesting how they identified the different hazards, and I guess probably for us, living in the woods, the biggest fear is forest fires.
Yes, wildfire, as well as blowdown and straight-line winds becoming more of a weather pattern are our biggest hazards, and, and the new update to the plan will rank each hazard and prioritize the mitigation activity.
So, the 7,000 that you already have, we still need 28 on top of that.
The state will provide that grant.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay.
Great, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Support.
Thank you. Discussion, is there anyone opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, an update will be brought back when we have drafts of the plan. Commissioners, as well as the public, will be included in the process.
Great, we saw that in the plan, it's a great.
We just signed up for more homework.
Yes, we signed up for more. That's our job.
Homework.
Yes, it's great, thank you. Okay. So, now Administrator Cadwell, you have an update and a contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we could consider item B first.
Yes.
The, at our last meeting, you granted, granted me the responsibility and authority to negotiate a contract for continuing education or engineering services during the vacancy in our county engineer position. And Wednesday morning last week, I had a meeting with Kristin Foster and Matt Huddleston from Lake County and with John McDonald from MINDOT, and we outlined the scope of, of their availability, of Kristin's availability to provide that oversight. John McDonald was concerned about the oversight of the, of the County State Aid Project and County State Aid Highway 7, and, and making sure that we had statutorily required oversight of that project. And so, what you see before you is a, is a, is the proposed contract from Lake County to provide continuation of services, and it's limited in scope in a couple of ways. It's limited specifically to the things that we need an engineer to sign off on and to provide oversight to, and, and it, and it's limited in the timeframe, as you'll see that it's, it says that the contract is good through October 25th or until we find a replacement county engineer, whichever comes first. And that's simply because Kristin had some time off scheduled, and she said, "I will do this, but it's not going to go into the time off that I have scheduled." And we want to be very, very respectful. They have a lot of work going on down in Lake County this year, and Kristin has already been up. She came up that afternoon to meet with staff and to review the projects in hand. She was onsite yesterday. Her plan is to be here approximately one and a half days a week, and I think that's going to be Thursday afternoon and Friday, that she's planning to be here to lend support to our staff. And so, she'll primarily be working with the engineering techs who are the onsite, have the onsite responsibility for the County 7 Project. The Maple Hill Pitt Road is a part of that contract, so all of that is managed by Ulan Contracting, and we've had conversations with them as well. So, everybody is up to date on what's going on with this. The terms of the, of the agreement, you can see there is, is they're suggesting $145 an hour for this, for the professional services. And I had just the opportunity to get this to Attorney Hickon to review late afternoon, so I don't know if she had an opportunity to review or make comment.
I'm looking at her right now. I have some questions. I need to add some language, but I don't think I would change the substance of the agreement if the commissioners wanted to move forward and approve subject to attorney finalization or something like that.
And, and one of the questions that, that Kristin asked was oversight and supervision of staff, and we assured her that what I want her to do is the things that, that the engineer is required to do, and internally, we would take care of the coordination and the oversight and the payroll, and, and prepare things to the point that they're ready for her to sign off on. We can summarize, we'll do that. Had the conversations with Lisa Storley and, and Charlie and Russ, and, and they're all on board to, to make this work, so.
Great, thank you. So, Commissioner Storley, do you have questions?
Well, since this was just given to us a little while ago, the one thing that pops out at me is the routine attendance at county board meetings. So, will you be the liaison between what's going on out there, so we're kind of heads up on everything?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, for asking that. Yeah, I'll be the liaison at this point. On Fridays, I'll get a summary between our techs and with Kristin, and I can provide those to you, which will actually give you typically more construction update information than we're used to getting, because we always knew that David just was taking care of those things. And that'll be one, one of the things that we put together on Friday mornings when I'm visiting with her, is, is just an update, just a bullet point update of where things are and what's going on with that. And as far as presenting things to the board, I just, I'm assuming that most of the stuff that's not in the process, not in the queue, that doesn't have a timeframe, and John McDonald is going to help us identify what those things are, we're just going to delay those things. So, I've had a conversation last year, we, or last week, we said that contract with Good Point Consulting for the data set up, up and down Conflent Trail, we said, "We're going to defer that until we have an opportunity to, to review that." So, that won't come back to us probably until we have a new engineer in place, and they can make a, a statement onto the necessity of that, and the rest of our staff confirms that we can use that GIS data. And then, some of the other projects related to Otis Creek and the Stone Gate Order Group that's, that's concerned about that process, we just said, "This is the kind of thing that we need our engineer on staff here to manage that process." So, they had a meeting scheduled for August 12th, and we've notified all those people that that's just going to wait until we get there. Now, we do have some other things in development and in queue. We've got engineering developments for the County Route 42 through 45 Project, and that's ongoing. We have the scoping of the, of the County 17 Project, and that consultant has reached out to me, and we're trying to set up a time when we can get up and, and visit with April and other concerned Grand Portage people and talk about the scope of that County 17 Project. So, those things will continue to happen, and those will be the things that we'll provide the most weekly updates.
Okay, thank you.
Great, it's, it will be a challenge, but it sounds like we, we, we know what we need to do, so, thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
Thank you for all the work of the members putting this together with short notice, and I will bring one of my colorful cards next week for all of us to sign and thank the Lake County Board.
Yes, oh, card, yes.
For working with us, yes.
I would make a comment, Commissioner DuKirk, is when I sat down with them on Wednesday morning at 7:30 on Wednesday morning, and we'd been having this conversation since Monday, Kristin already had this laid out, including all the details. She knew the projects that we had on our books, so she really has, the only thing Matt said is, "We can't try to take her from them."
Did he make this pinky swear?
She's getting a new building, so.
I think she's very happy where she is, but I have, I have no, no doubt about her competency and her earnestness in, in being willing to facilitate this process for us.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Bershine?
I would like to thank Mr. Cadwell and commend him for getting on top of this right away. The implications of this being delayed are, are huge, so, and I know that that's going to add a lot to his plate, so grateful for that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Dushaw?
Thanks for doing this, Jeff, and hopefully we get some good applicants soon, and we get some hired.
Thank you. So, all that being said, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second that, and that's pending county attorney review?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Understood.
And just for the record, this is to approve a 2017 interim Cook County Engineer Agreement with Lake County to provide engineering oversight to State Aid CASA 7 rehabilitation and other projects requiring the statutory qualification of county engineer in the state of Minnesota effective July 12th through October 25th, or until Cook County employs a county engineer, whichever comes first. That's the official language.
Pending county attorney approval.
Yes, thank you. That is the motion, and we're all agreed on that. Are there any opposed to this motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. So, any other, I mean, that's a huge update. I don't know if there's anything left to update on, but.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I'd make two other comments. One is, the review committee, or the, the search committee for the replacement of the engineer, Commissioner Dushaw and Bershine and John McDonald and I are going to meet Thursday afternoon to define the scope of that, so we'll have an update of what that process looks like and, and who will be a part of that committee, and hopefully, we'll get a good start on that Thursday, so we can get this moving quickly as well. And the second one that I would provide is, is I know we've, we've had some, had a lapse since our last update about the comp study implementation, and I'd, I'd simply give you a status update on the review committee. The review committee formed of myself and Judy Hill and Administrator, or Attorney Hickon and Rena Rogers and Diane Booth met earlier this week, last week, and we're meeting again tomorrow, and we should be able to complete the reviews that we have in queue and be able to get that back to the employee groups and the department heads, and then hopefully get back to having conversations with the employee groups related to adoption of the comp study and negotiation for 2017 and/or 2018 contracts as needed.
Wow, that's a lot, too. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move into employee concerns, commissioner concerns, commissioner reports. Anyone have a commissioner report? Commissioner DuKirk?
So, I'd like to ask the board for August, since we have so much going on with engineer replacement and new committees and committee updates and highway committee and budget on top of that, we have an extra Tuesday in August, and I was wondering if anyone would be interested in moving our committee of the whole from our normal time to that Tuesday and making it a three or four-hour meeting rather than a two-hour meeting. That's my request.
Clarification, would it be in the morning or in the afternoon?
However you want to do it, if you're willing to make that adjustment.
Let's have everybody weigh in on that. Do we have, let's get a, what, what date specifically are we talking about?
It is August 29th. So, we don't normally have any meetings that are extra. In the past, we've done work sessions or group sessions or something on that day.
Great, that makes sense. Can you think about it? You can absolutely think about it. I've got five seconds.
If I could make a suggestion, we, we do have, we do have some things lined up for the Committee of the Whole on the 15th, so maybe we modify this to hold the Committee of the Whole on the 15th as we normally would, but schedule a special budget session on August 29th, whether that's from 9:00 to noon or 1:00 to 4:00, whatever that is, I think that that would, for example, we, we, George Wilks was, was here and wanted to present today at the Committee of the Whole, but because we've got Bruce Kimmel coming, and he was going to take that whole two hours, I said, "Can we wait till August?" So, I would make that suggestion, that maybe we, we continue to hold the regular Committee of the Whole on the 15th and, and hold a, a special just budget meeting, which is good, because we have two budget committee meetings between now and the August 29th, too, so.
Yeah, and it sounds like we're really going to need this time. So, Commissioner Dushaw, did you have a weigh-in on that or thought about that? Could you?
Afternoon works.
Afternoon works, okay.
As far as I know right now.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, it would, would be nice to know now, but if it can't be.
A month and a half away.
Yeah.
We have another meeting this month.
Yeah, okay, so, okay, let's.
We tried to give you all plenty of time.
You were, and that was good. So, yeah, my five-second rule didn't quite make it, so, we'll.
Can we think and decide by next Tuesday?
Yes, let's do that.
We have another meeting.
Okay, very good, excellent. Okay, that's more than five seconds. That's really good. Okay. Any other commissioner reports, concerns?
Just a reminder that, that something came out on September 14th and 15th, there's a.
Oh, yeah.
A fall conference at Breezy Point for commissioners to let Julie know if you plan to attend.
If we all, are we all planning to attend?
I do.
I already said Julie might sign me up.
Okay, you are. So, if Julie can at least know that, and Commissioner Dushaw, do you know yet if you are able to attend? But yes, so if we make it a point of letting Julie know this week, that would be great, of whether we're attending or not, so she can, I know that rooms fill up at these conferences, and, so she can make the arrangements. Okay, so it sounds like, yeah?
Yeah, and then that week, the 25th through the 29th, I'm out of town, so the last week is up.
Okay, so you can make it to Breezy Point, though. Okay, so perhaps after this, I will go tell Julie that we're all going, and you're probably going, and.
I'll, we'll talk to her, yep.
Yeah, good, very good. Okay, so Breezy, Breezy Point does go for all. And I just wanted to remind folks that you should have all received a blank performance review sheet for Administrator Cadwell, and those are due to Julie by July 24th. So, if you can get those done this week, that would be great, too.
Thanks, Jan, I totally forgot about that.
Yeah, seeing new homework, yeah, for the homework group, okay. Very good. So, meetings to note, meeting updates, those have all been covered, and Commissioner Dushaw, the WTIP interview is yours, and are you able to, are you able to perform?
I'm passing.
What's that?
I'm passing.
You're passing? Passing?
Today.
Are you able to do it today? Can you not make it today?
I already talked to Jeff.
Okay, you're good?
So.
So, do we need a replacement, or do we?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. And I got a note from Joe, too. He's not available tomorrow morning, but he would like somebody who can speak to him either now, between now and Committee of the Whole, or after Committee of the Whole, and he would just like a call to say when, when to plan for that, but he's not available tomorrow morning, and.
Okay.
And Commissioner Dushaw thought it would be premature for him to have much to say this early in.
I hear you.
And he asked that somebody else would take his spot this time.
No worries. No worries. Anybody really dying to do it? If you're not, I'd, I'd be willing to do it. Okay, so, did you want to?
No, go ahead.
So, I will go talk to Joe in between now and our Committee of the Whole. Does that work for everyone? Okay.
I will let him know.
Great, so, right after this, I will go up to the radio and take care of that. Very good, and I totally get it, Commissioner Dushaw, it's a, it's, being on the radio is, it's a task to be taken, not to be taken lightly, I guess, and that's, so it's careful consideration. Okay, so, that being said, is there anything else on our agenda? If not, we can recess. Recess and.
Reconvene at 1:00.
Yep, we'll meet back here at 1:00 for a great afternoon.
That is sent out by the state every year.
I'm ending the live stream and just filming the next thing.
Yep. Oh, right, 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 right.